City manager's not here. It's the four of us up here.
Thanks. All right. We'd like to welcome you to our Riverdale City Council meeting for Tuesday, October 5th, 2021. Let the record show that all city council members are present. We would like to excuse Mayor Norm Searle tonight as he is recovering from an illness. We also have members of the city staff present, and if there are any members of the community, we ask that they would sign the roll outside at some point. We welcome you. We'll move on to our pledge of allegiance at this time. I've asked council member Brent Ellis to lead us in the pledge.
Darian, so please rise and repeat the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Ellis. We'll now have a moment of silence. During that time, we would ask that you might keep Mayor Searle in your thoughts as he is still recovering and has a long ways to go. We also ask that you might keep our police and fire officers in your thoughts, that they might be kept safe as they go about their duties. And also, please keep the members of the city council as we make decisions on behalf of the residents tonight. We'll now take a moment of silence. Thank you. All right. The next the next item on our agenda is public comment. We would ask we would ask that yeah, yeah.
Could I make a motion to move the swearing in of the new officers forward so their families and officers don't have to deal with some of the exciting things that we have on our agenda? That was a motion.
I'll second it. Okay, do we have a second?
That was Hilton.
Okay, we have a second from Councilman Hilton. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we will change the agenda order slightly tonight. We will move up the swearing of the police officers in, and so we'll turn some time over to Chief Brinkman.
If you guys want to maybe stand over here, kind of more by Michelle. Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to just give an introduction of the new officers. We always hate to see anyone go, and I think as we swear them in, we should make them swear that they'll stay here their whole career with some sort of punishment if they don't. It's an exciting time to welcome in new officers. Jared Baker comes to us from Ogden City Police Department. He worked there for three years, and he was on their, in their traffic division, motor squad officer. He's also involved in defensive tactics, and he currently lives in the city, which is is nice, and he's married and has a daughter. And he lived in California, right? Graduated high school there, and so he's got some California roots in him, too. And he's off to a good start. He just completed his field training, and he's doing great things, and we have high expectations for him. And then Jeff at Minster, did I say that right? Good deal. He comes to us from Harrisville Police Department, and he's put in four years with Harrisville prior to coming here, and he was assigned as a school resource officer. That was his assignment right before he came to us, which was probably kind of difficult to give up. I know he's heavily involved in working with kids. He coaches Orion Junior High's football team or helps as an assistant with the team there. And so he also is a defensive tactics instructor and teaches at the police academy. So those are some assets that we can use in our department as well. And the one thing that I would really like to say is it's really nice when we do interviews and hiring. The one thing I can always tell guys and that I can sell them on is that we have a very supportive mayor and counsel for law enforcement in Riverdale. It's been that way my whole career, but it's just been awesome and phenomenal since I've been chief. And so right now, you know, with the state of everything, different cities and that, you don't see that in every city. And officers really need to feel support from the political leaders in the city, or it becomes very difficult to do their job. If I don't feel the support as a chief, it just kind of filters on down. And we have that going on here in Riverdale. So kudos to each of you who serve on our council and for our great Mayor Searle for that support that we feel from you. So we appreciate that. And I'll turn it over to Michelle Maragoni, our recorder, to swear them in.
Thanks, it'll be fine. Raise your right hand. And repeat after me, you guys can just do it in unison. I state your name.
I, Jeff Adminster.
Do you solemnly swear that I will support and defend
Do you solemnly swear that I will support and defend
Constitution of the United States of America?
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the state of Utah?
The state of Utah.
Against all enemies, both foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties?
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties.
As a police officer of the Riverdale City Police Department?
As a police officer of the Riverdale City Police Department.
Under the appointment of the department according to the laws?
Under the appointment according to the laws.
Of the state of Utah?
Of the state of Utah.
To the best of my skills and abilities?
To the best of my skills and abilities.
Mr. Mayor, can I make your comment?
Sure.
It's nice to have these gentlemen joining our police force. Mr. Baker is a neighbor, and I've been pitching him, and he's been very coy, saying, I love my job, I love where I'm at. But boy, was I surprised the other day to see that Riverdale car in your driveway instead of that Ogden City car. Congratulations.
Anybody else? All right, that is fantastic, and we're happy to have you, Officer Baker and Officer Minster. It is a neat thing to see these guys get sworn in. We don't get to see it very often because we don't get new officers very often, it doesn't feel like. And so I'm always excited to see these new young guys join the force and kind of get a feel for just how good Riverdale is. I think the citizens, from what I've seen, really support our officers as well, and so we're just super happy to have you. So congratulations on joining Riverdale City. Okay. We will now move to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the community to address the city council with your concerns or ideas. No action will be taken during this time. We do ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Please state your name and your address, and and the time is now yours.
Just here at the podium, is that okay? I have a few comments, but it was my understanding that the closed session was going to happen before public comment and that, because my comments relate more to what's going to be discussed at the closed session. Is the public comment only open before you're going to have your closed session?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I nonetheless have a few comments. Let me just grab them. In the event that the council determines
Introduce yourself.
Sure, my name's Jason Scow. I'm not a member of Riverdale, a member or a resident of Riverdale City. I don't know if that precludes me from making comment or not, but I'll be the first to admit I don't live here in Riverdale. I am a family friend of Mr. Kobeb, and I have some concerns and some comments about the way that I feel that his situation has been handled, and I don't think that he's been afforded the fairness that he should have been under the circumstances, the ability to comment himself, to present his side of the story. Rather, it was told to him by the city attorney, Mr. Brooks, that you, the members of the council, in a closed session on September 15th, had in fact instructed him to take action and to effectuate the termination of Mr. Kobeb. If that's the truth, so be it. I guess my concern is that he had sent a letter to Mr. Kobeb on September 9th, a formal letter advising him that a decision had been made to put him on administrative leave with pay, that that decision was made at the direction of the mayor, who, to my understanding, was hospitalized at the time. So I question what involvement or direction the mayor had in that decision. In the event that it was a decision by the council as opposed to the mayor, then I guess that was just a mistake in the letter that was given to Mr. Kobeb. If you, the council members, were not in the loop on that letter, I have copies for each of you here tonight if you'd like to take a look. Are any of you interested in seeing the letter that was given to Mr. Kobeb on September 9th?
I believe we've all seen it.
Okay. And so my comment is, and my concern is that if the mayor wasn't involved, the letter says that he was. The letter from September 9th also advises Mr. Kobeb that he would have a right to present his version of the story, that he would be kept advised of all meetings, that he would be involved in a predetermination hearing. It was subsequently explained to him that he has not afforded that right because he is an at-will employee. He's a contract employee, and his employment may be terminated at will, is what was told him. I'm concerned that the letter tells him that he's going to have these rights, and then within a week after that, within a week after that, those rights apparently are stripped away and the story changes. To the extent that there's going to be a decision made to terminate Mr. Kobeb, I strongly urge you to reconsider. This is a situation that apparently arose because of a passing of a family member and an obituary, and someone noticing that flowers were sent out by two different employees, and the connection is made, oh, Mr. Kobeb must have a relative here at Riverdale City. He was not aware that he had a relative that worked at Riverdale City when he applied. He was not asked about that during the application or interview process. After he had applied, he learned that his brother-in-law was employed part-time in the recreation department. It just seems strange to me that that kind of an issue could lead to the termination of someone who's been hired under a contract for a three-year term of employment at a specific salary and under certain terms. The city should be very concerned if they're contemplating terminating his employment based on assurances by Mr. Brooks that they have the authority and the right to do that because of the at-will determination or the at-will argument.
Mr. Scow, you have about 30 seconds.
Thank you. So if a decision has not been made, I'd ask you to reconsider and look at the specific terms in the four corners of the contract which he entered into with Riverdale City, because that's what's going to govern if this goes to a court of law. And I don't think Riverdale City likes lawsuits, but this has directly and seriously impacted Mr. Kobeb and his family. And the way that it went down, there's something not right. So please reconsider.
Thank you. Is there any other comments? Seeing none, we will move on to the consent items. Consent item number one, consideration to approve the meeting minutes from September 21st, 2021 council work session and also the city council meeting. Is there any changes or corrections to these other than the one that we noted upstairs? If not, we need a motion?
I'd move to approve consent items with the one change that was brought up in the pre-council meeting.
Okay, motion? Do we have a second?
Second?
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it passes unanimously, thank you. We'll now move on to our action items. Number one, consideration of resolution 2021-24, an approval for the Trailside Flats Apartment Final Site Plan, property located approximately 690 West, 4400 South, Riverdale, as requested by Brad Brown and Colliers International. Mr. Eggit?
Thank you. I'll just quickly review the executive summary and the other items I talked about during the work session, but if you have specific questions, feel free to bring those up, and I'll be glad to answer, or Mr. Brown can answer. Brad Brown is present tonight with us, he's in the audience attending. The site plan proposal is on property that was previously established as old residential home sites and is currently vacant real estate. The current property owner is Daniel Phelps. On September 14th, 2021, the planning commission had reviewed the final site plan submittal for recommendation to city council. Following their review of the submittal, they provided a recommendation, a motion and approval of recommendation to city council to approve the final site plan with the understanding that all staff and engineering concerns be resolved. Those concerns have been resolved sufficiently to fulfill staff and engineering recommendations and support for the project as submitted. Public hearing isn't required for the site plan proposal this evening, and then obviously the recommendation is for council to consider all options in making a motion for the site with the sufficient findings of fact. Any approval that might be provided would allow the project to move forward with future building permitting and pre-construction processes. I will also note that this matter came before the design review committee wherein the proposed material, summary coloration, signage, and landscaping designs were discussed and thereafter approved by the board during that meeting. And then the engineer's cost estimate document has been provided by the project engineer team. Those amounts have been reviewed by our city engineer, Scott Nelson, and he recommends approval of the engineer's cost estimate as well. As noted in the work session, the general plan used for the site is set as residential low density, and this designation will need to be updated, but the next general plan update is a property in this location is all zoned R5, and the designation should be high-density multifamily. The resolution number 2021-24 has been prepared and provided by Mr. Brooks along with this request, and again, the supporting recommendation or supporting review comments are found thereafter in the packet, followed by the application and the engineer's cost estimate, and then thereafter followed by the actual submittal documents and design, colorations, materials, et cetera, for the site. And with that, I would defer to the council if you have any other questions for myself or Mr. Brown at this time. Thank you.
I have some questions
Mr. Ellis?
From Mr. Brown. Could you tell us how many apartments are going to be in that facility, and if you're going to have parking, off-street parking, or what that, how you're going to handle that?
Yeah, and for the record, Brad Brown, 719 West, 4350 South. There'll be 48 apartment units, and we have all of our parking self-contained within the surface parked, but no on-street parking. So we have plans to put no parking signs where it currently is being used as parking, but, so.
Yeah, when this originally came before the city council, they were going to try and coordinate some type of activity with the senior center that's next door. Is that still part of the plan, or is this going to be separate, standalone?
That's not part of the current plan. My understanding is that was part of Dan Phelps' original plans with the property. Thing, you know, economic factors, I guess, had changed for him, and I've discussed with him. My client's buying it from him, but I discussed with Dan, and he walked me through, especially post-COVID conditions for you know, facilities like Stony Brook and, you know, supporting facilities, it's just a lot harder to to make those work, and so.
Can you move the microphone up, please?
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
So it's currently just market rate apartments.
Do you know about how much you're going to be asking around, is there going to be any low-income?
There, this, this project is not really big enough to facilitate low-income components, so it's going to be market rate, kind of one bedroom to two bedrooms, kind of $1,200 to $1,500 a month range.
All right, thanks.
Mike, what was the difference between one across the street to designate high-density versus medium-density?
As far as unit count, it was significant. It was, I don't even remember the number. I did a whole analysis, but it's up in my office, I don't have it with me. It was significant. It was, it probably went from, gee, around maybe 50 units in R4 to 150. It tripled. It tripled to R5 because of the way that the, you can stack, and the coverage of the lot goes up to 60%, and you can have like a three-to-one-floor ratio, that sort of thing, so it like triples the unit count.
So it's R4 in the trailer park, R5 across the street where we're talking about?
The trailer park is actually currently designated as MH1, but an R4 would satisfy the general plan at the medium-density designation.
Right, but they were, they were asking for the high-density
They wanted the R5. That's correct. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right.
This proposal is three floors, so 15 units a floor.
No, it's, I mean, it's got some amenities on the first floor, and so it's not exactly that, but.
Less than 45 units.
It was 48 units, but I don't remember the counts. We've got two or three units on the bottom floor that, that footprint essentially has some amenity space, so there'll be like a clubhouse-type thing inside, so.
Mike, Mr. Eggit? Was this, so really, this would really have fit into an R4?
Probably not, because you can't get, you don't have enough coverage. An R4 is a 50% building coverage, and R5 accommodates a 60%, and it has a higher green space, so the ratios change. So at this point, you, with the lot size being what it is, an R4 would not provide as many units. It'd probably be
I'm just, what, what was the
18, 20 units, maybe.
When the previous owner was pitched this for, why he went for R5?
The neighboring, the neighboring, like I said, the two-thirds parcel to the east was already R5 prior. There was this weird square that wasn't, and Stony Brook was R5. So you had this orphan parcel that was a residential zoning that didn't fit with the neighboring parcels being R5. And his, under his idea was to do, I can't remember exactly, I don't know, maybe Brad, you might have to help me, but it was something to do with like two, two-story apartments that were more accessible, that aging
It was two-story
generations or
That had accommodations for senior living.
Yeah. But that, that's, that's kind of, that's what I recall. Like I said, there was already a deficiency in the general plan because Stony Brook was R5, and you had, this is R5, and then this little orphan area that wasn't R5. And I'm not saying that, that the direction we took is the best way to go, that's why I said this whole thing needs to be cured with a general plan update, for sure. But, but that's how I believe it happened, and yeah, and he did evidence that there would be a connectivity to Stony Brook when he brought that originally forward.
And elevators and different things that
Some of that effect. I, again, a lot of what he brought forward was conceptual, so it's hard to exactly know, but.
Granted, I think also in the future, it's general plan, but also put off zoning changes until they're ready to proceed with the building, because otherwise you get this situation.
Well, and again, it's, absent going too far into this discussion, maybe is a better discussion in the future, but from a holistic perspective, I think you look at the zoning and all the uses, and are we as a city comfortable with all the uses that come with that zoning designation? That, that's probably how sophisticated we need to start looking at our zoning requests going forward, is are we okay with everything that comes in there? It's great if someone says, this is what I want to do, this is what I'm going to do, but then we end up here, right? So we need to look at all the uses when we consider a rezon request and see if we're okay with those before we move forward with them.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah.
Is your client there?
They're not.
Okay, well, I did have something for you to pass on to them.
Yeah.
I just spent some time down at Salt Lake with with Councilman Hilton and also with Mr. Brooks at the Utah League of Cities and Towns. We went to several lectures and classes. We heard from Mayor Mike Caldwell from Ogden and from, from the governor, and housing was just everywhere we went. Every class we went to, they talked about housing. And so, I mean, I'm kind of glad to see this coming in, to be honest. I think, I think it is going to fit decent there. I, as I read the packet and I saw that it was going to have 48 units, my heart sank a little bit, and I thought, oh, man, like that is going to be big, and I was afraid it was just going to be like a big box, like some of the other things I've seen around the county. And I was really happy when I actually saw the drawings. So if you could just pass on to them, I appreciate them putting the effort into giving us a good project that looks good, and I think will be a good fit in that area.
Councilmember Mitchell, the designer review committee seemed to echo those comments. The residents of the committee that are on that committee echoed those same comments, that the exterior design is, is more elaborate than the concern, which could be just a simple box with not a lot of change in exterior architecture and coloration. So just want to let you know that as well.
Yeah, I think it looks nice, and it will encourage the development to stay nice. And so anyway, just thanks for that.
I'll echo that. I I do think the design looks nice, and I would note that where we may have been looking for something else there when we rezoned, I think that there has been a change, for sure, in the, in the state, if not the country, toward high-density housing or high-ish density housing. And so what might not have been a good fit is now a good fit, in my view.
I appreciate that.
Brayden?
Yeah, Councilmember Arnold.
Oh, sorry, Councilmember Mitchell? Move to approve resolution 2021-24 as stated within the packet.
Second?
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none? Ms. Maragoni, we poll the council.
Councilmember Ellis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Remember Arnold?
Aye.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Nay.
Okay, it looks like it passes four to one. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a closed executive session. We would need a motion to go into an executive session.
Summerved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
As part of that motion, just state
Going into closed session.
Under that code section there.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Let's see, so you're the, you're the motion.
524205, personnel issues.
Okay, so we, let's move into an executive session, sections pursuant to provisions in section 52.4-205 of the Open and Public Meeting Law for the Purpose of Discussing the Character Professional Competence or Physical or Mental Health of an Individual.
Okay, and it looks like, so we have a motion, we have an updated second?
Does that mean? Yes.
You good with that? Okay, it looks like we also need a roll Okay, it looks like we also need a roll call vote. Sorry, Ms. Maragoni, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Councilmember Arnold?
Aye.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're in executive session.